Madam City Clerk, are we ready?
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
This is Mayor Ramirez's recording clerk. This city council budget workshop of July 26, 2022, is being held with a quorum of City of Westlake Council physically in attendance at the Westlake Council chambers 4005 Seminole Pratt Whitney Road. Public com-- I'm sorry.
Go ahead, please.
Public comments may be accepted prior to the meeting utilizing the electronic comment card available on the city's website. Public comments are also permitted at the appropriate time during the meeting. The mayor will call for such during public comment, and you may participate at this time utilizing the system's virtual hand feature and waiting to be acknowledged. Please note, this meeting is being recorded, both voice and video, and to remember, your mic may be live. I will mute any microphones that carry any feedback or interruptions. If you are a caller that has been muted, you may unmute yourself by pressing star six. Any person in the virtual meeting causing a disruption or being inappropriate will be removed from the meeting. If I might also remind those physically in attendance, please utilize microphones so that the virtual audience and a clear recording of the meeting is produced. Thank you, Mayor O'Connor.
Thank you. Let's call to order City Council Budget Workshop, July 26, 2022, at 6:01 P.M. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Charlotte Leonard.
Present.
Councilman Julian Martinez.
Present.
Councilwoman Pilar Vallejron.
Present.
Vice Mayor Greg Langowski.
Present.
Mayor Jean Paul O'Connor.
Present. Stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. We have in front of us the 2023 proposed budgets. Mr. City Manager, are you ready for your presentation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As part of the presentation this evening-- See here, are we ready? It's not working, Zoe. Oh.
One moment, please.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor and Council, one of the things that, as I was looking for this budget-- The initial presentations, again, this is a lean budget, as austere as we've always been. But one of the things that I thought was appropriate is that with the council, this being-- Current council composition being relatively new to this, going back and kind of bringing a history of where we've came from, where we're at, why we're here today, and what then go into the existing budget that's proposed to you tonight. Not advancing, Zoe. I guess. Okay. Start with a little bit of background. Most of you may or may not know that Westlake was formed in 2016 through a conversion incorporated plan process. It's outlined in Florida statutes 1650615, where basically the residents decided to convert from a district to a resident, to a city. CID, who existed prior to since the '70s, has all the powers granted in its enabling legislation, although it doesn't have police powers, comprehensive planning, zoning, and building, among others. So, as the incorporation plan was being examined and considered, a government-like format was established where the city would be contracted for all of its functions. And CID, as it already had, had operational and owning of all the infrastructure of the 4,000 acres that exist within the boundaries of CID and city after the incorporation. There is an interlocal agreement that addresses the relationship between the two entities. We will be calling a meeting in August, as we're required in the interlocal agreement to have at least one meeting a year of joint boards. So sometime later in August, we'll have a meeting with the CID board and the city discussing what's going on in the future and some other options that are happening. The form of government that was set up in the initial charter is a council manager form of government, which most of you understand. Council's responsible for setting policies. City manager is responsible for implementation of the policy and the day-to-day operations. You see before you the organizational chart, which reflects the council manager form of government. But you also note that there is a line between Seminole Improvement District and the county-- City Council. The two boards are equal, per se. They have different functions, but they function together to provide the totality of the services required for the residents of the city's boundaries. As I stated before, it's set up as a contract system. There's seven major contracts. Infomarc provides administrative services, city manager, clerk, et cetera. Goran Chernov and Duty is legal services. NZ Consultants, planning and serving, zoning services. Chinmore Engineering is a contract for engineering services. Nova Engineering is the building department. PBSO is the police services. And then also, we have a contract for waste management. You notice that I don't have a fire contract in here because we don't have an actual contract because we're part of the MSTA for fire services, which is a separate tax for fire services, which covers the city. Personnel breakdown in that Infomarc basically has a team of about 17 people that provide services that actually touch the contract on a monthly basis. The Attorney's Office, they have 13 attorneys plus paralegals. Danielle is here, DJ's out, Jacob's tied up. So as again, they have a repertoire and enough people to be able to cover us when we need it. NZ Consultants has a team of seven people in planning and zoning. They supply services as needed. Chinmore has up to 13 engineers and admins in the West Palm Beach office that services as needed. And Nova Engineering has a team of 13 personnel in the building department that touch, in one way, shape, or form, a piece of the puzzle every month. And then PBSO has a team of-- Currently, we have five officers, which equates to one full-time officer 24/7. But also, the contract for PBSO provides us with SWAT, street teams, homicide, any other thing that we need. And any kind of a special event is also included in our contract with PBSO.
Yes. Colton Herring, where does that fit in?
Colter Herring is developer.
Okay.
When we started, it's almost like a little side note-- Try to trip down memory lane. Seems like yesterday we were just talking about the initial incorporation. But back in 2016, there was a corporation study that was produced. In that study, for five years, it was determined that a 5.125 millage rate would be necessary for the city to become economically viable. In addition to that, an agreement was entered into between the city and Mentha PBH LLC to fund shortfalls between 2016 and 2021, should the 5.125 millage not cover the cost of the city. It was amended and extended to September 30 of 2023. That being, this is our last year of funding potentially from the developer. It should be noted also that Mentha being the largest landowner, with the exception of Grove Market and a couple others, they not only pay the largest tax-- They're the largest taxpayer-- but they're also stopgap funding the city from the beginning. First budget was-- Covered us from July, since we formed in June, from July to September of 2016. And that expense to the developer was $535,000. The 2016-17 budget was a $1.3 million budget, millage rate of 5.125, and a developer contribution of $1,001,001. And taxes brought in about $72,000 and $156,000 from permits and fees. Our 2017-18 budget was about $1.8 million, developer contribution of 1.5, and about $140,000 in taxes and permits fees of $167,000. Our 1819 budget keeps growing because we were growing as a city. 3.1 million, 1.3.14 million, same millage rate, developer contribution of about 1.8, only generated about $248,000 from taxes. 2019-2020, $4 million budget, 4.2. Developer contribution estimated at 1.9. Development from taxes, $697,000, and then permit fees of about 1.4. The 2021 budget was 5.2. The millage rate of 5.125. 1.5 from the-- From the developer, about 1.1 from taxes. So you can see the taxes have leaked with quite a bit, and about $2 million for permit fees. The 2122 budget year, which is what we're in, it's about $6.4 million budget. Roughly estimated about $930,000 from the developer contribution. So you can see a drop from 1.5 to 930, and our increase from 1.1 million in taxes to 1.8 million in taxes. What we're looking at initially in the proposed general fund budget for 2223 is about $7.7 million overall budget, with a projected developer contribution of about $579,000, with 3.3 million coming from taxes and 4.3 million coming from permits and fees. So in a short synopsis, here's what Mentha's shortfall funding has been for the city, which is from 2016 to 2021, they funded, in addition to their normal taxes, $4.9 million, almost $5 million. In the 2122 budget year that we're in right now, we had budgeted $930,000. To date, we have not had to reach out for any additional funding. But depending on how the trends go between the last quarter, we may or may not have to. We'll see. Same thing with next year. It's a projected. We don't know exactly where we will or won't. Depends on how we set the budget and our expenses. Couple things that some of you may be new to governmental accounting is, our fiscal year starts October 1 in September 30 of the following year. So it's a little confusing sometimes when you say fiscal year '22. It's actually '21-'22. But it is that fiscal year for us. One of the questions, it's always a problem-- I'd say problem, but challenge, I should say-- is the timing. Since our fiscal year starts October 1, we don't receive any revenue from the county until December. So from October 1 to December is first quarter. So we have to have, in our accounts, enough operating services to operate a quarter of the year. So every budget will always have a fund balance and reserves for a first-quarter operating. You just automatically carry it forward based upon your projections of what your spending may be for the next year so you can cover that quarter. One of the difference between governmental accounting and fund accounting is-- And regular, I should say, regular accounting that most businesses use is it's funding, fund accounting. It operates similar, but different. It took me years to really kind of understand the concepts. But you have different funds, you have different parameters, and you have to do your accounting based upon GASB 54 rules. The general fund is primarily funded from property taxes, revenue-sharing utility taxes, communications, franchise fees, and stuff like that. We also have a special revenue fund for comprehensive planning services, which is basically planning, zoning, engineering, and the building department. It is a separate fund. The funds and revenues that are generated in that have to be spent in that department, with the exception of some administrative costs or legal costs that are expended in that area for time, can be charged in the area. But everything else has to remain in there. You cannot take funds from that comprehensive planning fund or building department and spend it on general fund-- Other general fund accounts. The other special revenue fund we have is the Housing Assistance Program, or HAP. Every house that's developer pays $1,500 into the account. Every resale, $1,500 is paid into the Westlake Community Foundation, which is a nonprofit that was set up as we started the HAP program. When the foundation has a certain amount of money, then they turn around and cut a check to the city. Then it goes into the HAP program to continue funding future HAP participants. In addition, 1/2% of the sale price of every commercial property is contributed to the fund. That's the initial sale of the property, not resales of the commercial property. But every initial sale that Mentha makes, we receive 1/2% of that as a fee. In the ad verum taxes, they're based upon millage. Millage is simply a number that's derived by the assessed value minus the homestead exemptions, divided by 1,000, and then multiplied by the millage rate. For example, if you have a home that is $450,000 minus a $50,000 homestead exemption, it's 400 divided by 1,000, it's 400-- Ends up to be 400 times 5.125, or your taxes for that year would be $2,050. Now, if you had a commercial that's worth $2.5 million, their taxes, because it goes into the explanation, there would be about $12,000 a year. So you can see that the drive to have a significant portion of the city in commercial helps the residents significantly to cover it. Because then that way, you can reduce the millage rate, which reduces it on everybody, but the bigger benefact is to the actual individual homeowners. One of the other sources of revenue we have is municipal revenue sharing. This is our part of the state sales and fuel tax that the state gives us each month. We get utility taxes. The city has implemented, in accordance with state statutes, a 10% tax on utility, electric, water, gas, telephone, telecommunications. So we do receive that as one of our revenue streams. Okay. We also have other licenses and permits and fees, which include franchise fees, occupational license, administration fees, contractor registrations, et cetera, as a revenue stream. We have not gotten into it yet, but down the road, I'm sure we will. There are also grants that end up in the revenue side if we find a grant that's worthwhile for us to participate in. And then lastly, in there's developer contribution, which ends in September 2023. We can go into-- This is the revenue details of what we're projecting as-- It's a little hard to see, apologize for that. As you can see up in the upper corner, and it's also on your budget package of, on page--
14.
14. As you can see, there's fiscal year '20, '21, '22, and '23. You can see the growth in the tax receipts that in 2020 was $554,000. '21 was $1,001,001. '22 was $1,008,000. And we're projecting in '23 is 3.1. There's also discounts calculated into the budget for those that pay early. You get your 4%. So we have to calculate that. Even though there's a gross amount, we end up working it back to the net. And then below that, you have the other taxes, whether fuel tax, et cetera. And you can see where we come down to roughly a-- All the different various taxes, fees, and permits. Then down on about 3/4 of the way down, you'll see developer contribution, and we have that currently slated for about $588,000. Now, how does this break out? General fund expenses by function. City council is-- And one of the functions is city council currently-- This is by all functions for the $4.8 million budget. City council, city manager, clerk, city attorney, finance. Probably a better graphing is in the graph chart here. You can see that our biggest expenses are in community services, which are-- You'll see in the next slide or two-- Primarily police services. City council budget is proposed for this coming year is $272,800. We do have the councils in there. As you go through it, if there's questions, we can go back and walk through these for adds and tracks and discussion on it. Next is the city manager's budget. You'll notice in the city manager's budget, the decrease of $38,000 because that, in accordance with some of the questions from the auditors this past year, there are funds now that that 38 is not in this portion of the general fund. It's in the comprehensive planning section, is where it's accounted for, even though it's paid in the same contract. City clerk is the same thing. Other departments, the auditing and finance. You can see where finance, again, part of their decrease of that 13% is because finance also does the other two funds, and some of their time is charged over there. Other administrative services we have in there, information technology, which is our GIS mostly, and some of the internet services that we currently have. And that budget for that department, when consultants, admin services, is $635,000. Next is the city attorney's budget. You'll notice, again, that the decrease of $187,000 from where we were-- Again, most of it is moved over to the other account. And then the other departments, which is facilities, which is your lease, your cable, TV, cleaning services. And that are in those departments. And then your community services department here with solid waste, sheriff's department. You'll notice that the sheriff's department from last year is from 655-- 650 to 954 because we are proposing to add a officer at October 1 to increase our number of officers. And then I have in the budget to add a second officer to our cadre and have in January, which we would have seven officers instead of our current five, which would give us two officers 24/7 versus one officer 24/7. And then contingency, this is the one-- The $910,000 is first-quarter operating. And then we do have in here the $200,000 that we've been putting in the budget and haven't been spending, which is some of the way we're making our numbers go so I don't have to go ask for money from Mr. Carter. That it's in the budget as a budgeted item, but if we don't spend it, we don't have it. One of the other things is we haven't funded our first-quarter operating because we've had the ability to go ask for the dollars. This year is the critical year where we have to make sure that by the time we're finished this year, I have the full 100% first-quarter operating reserves covered for the following year. So whether we-- It's a balance of what we don't spend and how much. And that's where we've calculated that we'll probably need about $575,000 from the funding mechanism by the end of next year. But that could change depending on what we spend or don't spend. This is the comprehensive master-- Or comprehensive planning division, which is on page-- 25 of your package. You can see that there is a-- Originally, we adopted in 2022 about a budget about 1.5. We're projecting a budget about 1.7. But currently, we've actually come into and forecasting about 1.8. So we're actually going to be about under what we're doing this year for revenue. But one of the things that you always do in this situation is you underestimate your revenue, overestimate your expenses some so that by the time you're done-- Because we only get paid once a year on most of this. So what we have, we get one shot at. If we miss, we're hurt. So that's where we are. And then expenses. And then the last page in your-- Is the Housing Assistance Program. Currently, we have about 3.4. We've already have in about $500,000 in outstanding mortgages that we have already given out in the HAP program. And more to come. But that's where our HAP program is sitting right now. And that's all I have as far as a presentation. And I'm happy to walk through any piece of it or answer any questions that you have on the budget. And that's all proposed at a 5.125 millage rate.
I've got a handful of questions, suggestions, things I think are too rich, too lean. I'd love to-- It's not too much, it's a dozen of them. Couple of them you answered for me already. But I'd like to run through them with you if you could.
Sure.
Page 14.
Okay.
First of all, under the year 2020, all the way at the bottom-- Not that this is really too relevant, but total revenue, 3.9. I can't for the life of me figure out how you got that number. Nothing in this column adds up to 3.9. Unless I missed something. Which is very possible.
Did the other column add up?
The other one's added up.
Okay.
The other one's added up. But I'm just, you know, it's the first column, so you kind of hope that one would be right. And it's 3.9. I mean, it's a lot of--
Good question. Steve Fowler, you're on.
It's not off by a little bit. Sam.
Yeah, can you explain where that 3.9 came from? In 2020. Well, he's looking at the--
Yeah.
Let's go to the other question.
Moving and grooving. All right, so next, under other taxes, this public service tax, electricity.
Mm-hmm.
Looks like we adopted $113,000, and it's forecasted to be $206,000. So we, you know, we missed the mark quite a bit there. Why are we only budgeting for 114? Seems like we should at least be budgeting for what we're forecasted at.
Was that anything with that?
So, other taxes.
Yeah.
Public service tax, electricity.
Okay.
Scroll over. So last year, we budgeted for 113. We're forecasting being above that by almost $100,000, yet we only added $1,000 to the budget for this year.
Again, underestimate your revenues.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's quite a bit of that's underestimating it by a hundred percent.
If consumption drops, if things change, your revenues can go down significantly.
I mean, FP and L just hiked their rates by drastic amount. I mean, I'm. These are just things that I'm pulling out.
We'll get a clarification.
So that's something I think we might want to look at a little harder because it's it's off by a lot.
Okay.
Then my second question was next column down FPL franchise fees. I'm kind of the same situation. So one ten is what we budgeted for. We brought in one ninety four. Yet next year we're only budgeting for one twenty. There's another. You know. It's again, another instance, and I only picked out the ones that were drastic. So that's another instance where it looks like we should be forecasting.
A little higher.
Higher.
Yes, Stephen.
The budget for those two items are the 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 estimates that we got from FPL.
Okay.
So so we use those numbers. Instead of instead of the the in instead of what what seemed apparent. Because FPL said during these years, this is what you'll get.
Okay. I guess if they're supplying us the numbers. I think the reality is we'll probably see like more than that, which is great. I love a couple of extra hundred thousand dollars, but if it's something that we have the ability of taking into consideration, we might want to. Do we know where this three point nine came from yet?
Stephen.
No, I I don't. I I can't quite quite see it yet.
He's digging still.
Alright, fair enough.
I'd like to kind of keep up.
Number four, lean search fees. This one was was a lot. So we budgeted for one point three thirteen hundred. We brought in almost eleven thousand. And next year we're budgeting for another thirteen hundred. I mean, we're only talking about ten thousand dollars here, but we're really talking about eight times what we budgeted for.
What? What? What we've sort of done as a a practice is that is we we come up with with an estimate for revenue that we see in the current year or or project in the current current year. We look at that number and the previous two years actuals. And if it's revenue, we pick the the lowest of the three numbers. Because we're we're it's it's an estimate that this year is is an estimate. And that's kind of how we we keep the the budget. So that any surprises we see are pleasant ones. And expenditures, we we look at the projected for this year and the previous two years and pick the highest one.
Also, if you look at this year, this past year has been very hot and heavy with resales and sales. If the interest rate changes and drops those off on resales, not necessarily new sales, but resales, those lean searches will drop significantly.
I get it. But I mean, even in twenty twenty, you still budgeted for the thirteen thirty. It's like we just love that number. And we did six times that, you know, at almost six thousand. And these are just observations I'm making, but it's it's something that I I don't know. We could drop in the pencil in terms of estimating. Then next page fifteen. See. For council expenses, I think that we're a little bit too lean, the opposite on that. I mean, we're forecasted to spend two eighty three. But we're budgeting for less than that. I think we should probably budget at minimum what we're looking at spending, what we spent. But now that we have this entire council of very involved residents, the expenses might be a little bit higher. You know.
Yes.
The the reason why it went down is because we we were paying stipends to to city council who were original members of of the the council and were paid at a higher rate. And now that they're all they've they've all been been replaced.
Yeah, that that's actually a different light item. These are council.
They're looking at operating. He's looking.
No, no, it's part.
He's primarily looking at the operating expenses that we may need to budget some of those a little higher than what we'd currently budgeted. Correct.
Yeah, I'm not talking about page seventeen, Mayor Council stipend where it's dropping drastically to a that's a different light item that you're speaking of. You're talking about page seventeen line, first line. Mayor Council stipend where it's going from ninety four thousand to
But what's on but what's on page fifteen is the total for the department. And I'm 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 and the the reason why the the budget for this year went is less than the is less than than forecast is because the forecast for the for the department total includes higher stipends dur- during the the first
First part of the year.
Six months of of the year. That we won't see next year. So that's why the budget's less. For the whole department.
I address that again in two pages, so we can we can go to the next one. Again, other administr- on the same page. Fifteen, other administrative services. If you could explain what that is, that would be great.
That's that's part of the seventeen thou- seventeen people that are in for Mark of the administrative services, all your back office, all your other people.
So I I think I know the answer to my question already, but it looks like we went from in twenty twenty two, we adopted six sixty nine, but we're only forecasted to spend four eighty six, which is great. We're adopting six thirty five again. Could that possibly be a little bit too rich? And is some of these expenses moving into other budgets?
On this one, some of it's moving into other budgets on this, but the changes in twenty twenty two, if you remember prior to that, I did not have the operations coordinator that we did add to the budget.
Right.
So that did add the budget back up from the it's it's been moving back and forth, but some of it's been moved to other departments as far as charging the thirty three five.
And is that why we ended up only spending four eighty six from the the estimated amount of six sixty nine? Because some of that money went into other budgets?
Stephen, I believe so.
You you can see the detail for that on page twenty twenty two. About halfway down, you'll see all the costs that that make up that. That.
Other administration services.
Yep.
Can I ask a question? Where will code enforcement, will that fall into this category as well?
No, code enforcement is under the special revenue.
So yeah, so while we're talking about other, I I have the I have a note here too, other administration services. I think our public relations budget is a little too rich here. You know, granted, we only spent twelve thousand in in twenty one. We budgeted for seventy five thousand, only spent twenty eight. I think we if if we need to save money someplace, that's a place we can. We're budgeting for seventy five thousand again. You know, with social media and inexpensive ways to do public relations. I think if we need to pull money from somewhere to add it somewhere else, that's a good spot. You know, we're forecasted to spend twenty eight thousand for this year, yet we're budgeting for seventy five. And I I mean, these aren't drastic changes, but
Stephen, Stephen, your numbers on your forecast are based upon June's financials or May's financials?
The these are actual what what you're you're looking at tonight is actuals through June.
Okay. So so we haven't. We still have a number of the for example, some of the public relation stuff has not hit the books. It hit this number yet, so that will go up. In other words, these numbers and forecasts are based upon what was expended as of June, forecasting out that expense rate through the end of the year.
Gotcha.
So some of them are a little bit off when you look at just that number, not understanding that it's a snapshot cutoff at a certain point in time.
I understand.
So next month, as you as you redo this every month.
Going to look closer.
The numbers, the numbers model.
I mean, it's just a and a place where I think if we need to cut or pull some money from someplace, that's someplace we could probably afford to do it. Now, since back to page seventeen, since we talked about it. I think that city events in itself, we were only budgeting for what we spent, which was one single event. Granted, we have to take into consideration, we raised almost eighty five thousand dollars. That's not in this line item.
Correct.
I think at the very least, we plan on having more than one event. This this city event line item might be a little too lean.
But it but you're looking at what we spent versus what the city spent. The city spent.
How much was the event?
Yeah, it's let me call it back up here. I've got it.
I'm talking about what we should budget for for next year.
But are you saying that the city would fund fully all the events that you're thinking of?
No, we absolutely will plan on getting sponsors and and so on and so forth. But like you said, you have to plan for it, put it in the budget.
Agreed.
We I mean, we can't guarantee I'm going to be able to raise eighty five thousand dollars. I hope to be able to raise more since we start planning now. But, you know, there's other events, you know, we we don't want to be a one trick pony as a city, have one event a year.
Do we have a plan if we're unable to get that sponsorship money?
That's why it's got to go in the budget. Like I mean, we need to without being too aggressive and fiscally irresponsible, we have to at least plan.
What I have as far as the numbers right now, we still have some stuff trickling in. All in with the PR firm was a hundred and sixty four, four seventeen for the event.
We initially budgeted what sixty?
Yeah.
And I raised we raised eighty five.
We raised, no, we raised eighty eight thousand eight fifty actually came in.
I think we're still missing what?
Five.
So we can call it eighty five.
So the total event cost one sixty five and we were able to raise half of that?
Yes. But going forward, raising that amount of dollars for that event next year would be hard pressed.
Right. I I agree with you. And that's why I'm trying to come up with a plan on.
I don't think it'll be hard pressed. Maybe it may be. More retail, more retailers who want to get involved.
More businesses.
Have more businesses. We'll have more time. You know, we didn't start fundraising until like two months before the event.
I under- I understand, but I would.
I don't want to count, you know, you never count your your chickens before you can, but I would hope I'd be able to raise at least the same amount.
And I think to your point, even if you took off twenty thousand or thirty thousand.
Still need to have it in the budget because if worst case scenario, we're going to get money. You know, we're not going to go into a reserve.
So this is a no matter what, this is a happening event is what you're saying.
But it won't be one six.
Correct.
Whether we raise money.
If if we have to foot the entire bill, if we if we've put the entire bill, we're looking at probably a hundred and sixty five K for the one event.
The one event.
Exactly.
Which is why I think we need to increase this line item.
Yeah.
Not by a ton, maybe by ten percent or something. But to give us some room so that we can have other events and it not.
Yeah.
It's still fundraised for the other events.
It would be nice to have a Christmas party.
Some stuff.
Years party, something.
Have some revenue, something to cover it.
Yeah.
I see what you're saying.
You have to have it in the budget.
Even if you raise money.
Yes.
So that's just.
How about one eighty five in that line item?
That's fine. That's plenty, I think. That gives us some opportunity to do some other stuff.
Yeah.
But I'm not saying we don't fundraise.
Agreed.
Hundred percent.
I'm fine.
Do a we could do a food truck invasion that'll literally pay for itself. We charge every food truck now that every food truck wants to come here desperately after July fourth. We charge each one a vendor fee, which we did not do for July fourth.
Exactly.
And then we use the excess money from the vendor fees to pay for the tents and the this and then that. And the event pays for itself. It's a zero. It's a wash.
That's what tonight's about. Tell me what numbers you're going in and I'll come back. I'll come back with what the final number is the next time and get it out to you.
And if, like I said, if we have to pull the fifteen grand that we're adding to this from one of those other items, I thought it was too rich. I don't think it's it's detrimental to our final budget. I'm not really talking about changing entire budget numbers, just maybe.
Put it in the right place.
Moving money around.
In the right place.
So to where the forecasts meet the actuals a little more responsibly. That's just one thing. And then and then speaking of council expenses, which was the next one down, I think this needs to go up to say twenty thousand minimum. Because right now we're forecasted at twelve nine. And again, we didn't have a very involved council before. But we just adopted the the ordinance to to reimburse for for miles and per diem and so on and so forth. I think that number should be slightly higher. I just recently, and I'm out there waving the city flag everywhere I can. I just you know, got it pointed to the
I would I would suggest.
Cities and this and that.
I would suggest to council that we raise that somewhere between twenty five and thirty. If because again, if you all are becoming more active and going to Florida League, et cetera, et cetera. Then yes, we will need that dollars in.
I think so. And this, I mean.
We'll raise that to thirty.
This forecasted amount is probably all me.
Used to be one of your predecessors did a pretty good job.
But if, you know, we've got other council members now that want to get involved and do stuff, we need to have the budget to be able to go out there and wave the city flag everywhere we can.
Put it in and see where the numbers come out.
That's an item. I want to commend you on page eighteen for leaning, even though I know you're moving it from one place to another, it still looks good on paper that the city manager's budget has a nice decrease there. Looks like I have a question on nineteen advertising. I highlighted it. Let me tell you why real quick. Oh, this was one of those places. So every year we've budgeted for thirty one and change. I assume this is for Zoe's advertising. And it looks like last year we only spent less than half of that. That might be another place where we can.
So what is, I'm sorry, what is Zoe's advertising?
I believe that's all the meetings have to get advertised.
All the meetings, all the ordinances, all the ordinances, depending on how many ordinances you have, depending on how many public hearings you have.
Where do we get this thirty one, two hundred magic number?
Okay, the the we we look at the projected actual for this year. And then we look at the actuals for the prior two years and pick the highest of those three numbers because we don't know what next year will will hold. Next year might be like fiscal year twenty.
So the highest of the three numbers would still only be twenty three.
Thirty one, two.
Thirty one, two.
This year is the highest.
It's twenty twenty is the highest of the numbers.
Of the budgeted amount, but we've never spent close to that.
No, thirty one, two is actual.
Twenty and twenty one are actual. Oh.
Thirty one, one seventy seven.
Thirty one, one seventy seven was your actual in twenty twenty.
I see in twenty twenty.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's why we chose the thirty one, two in there.
Got it. Now, why was it so high that long ago? I'm just curious.
Ordinance after ordinance after ordinance and resolution after resolution and other things. This was part of the LDRs process with a lot of that.
I guess let's just say twenty twenty three, we spend another fourteen thousand. Then the following year we'd be budgeting the twenty three, two because it goes back three years.
Yes, we would look at it again, again, depending on on that and depending on Yes, we would look at it again, again, depending on on that and depending on what we see as how many ordinances, how many things we're going to have to advertise and the type of advertising.
Reasonable, and again, you'd rather over overshoot it than undershoot it.
Correct.
So this, I believe you answered in your presentation, page twenty, um, legal services, that budget dropped drastically, that's because it's being moved to the White Department?
Correct.
Okay. Um, this one, if you could explain to me, how are we on page twenty-one, solid waste contracts? It might be because of the whole tax rule thing, but it looks like we're in the hole, couple hundred thousand dollars on solid waste, how did that happen and is that accurate?
Well, we we adopted a budget of two forty-eight.
Right.
But it's been costing us, but we've been collecting the dollars, we're not, correct me if I'm wrong, Stephen, but we're not actually short the dollars per se? It's in the budgeting forecast, is correct?
Well, it's 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 paid for in revenue. Um, there there are 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 two lines in revenue for that. The the solid waste was if every single year we've been doing the 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 billing and and collection for for that differently. And i- if you look at the revenues, there is a, there is a um, a budgeted revenue for the 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 assessments, which is what we collect from the the residents, and then there's a budgeted revenue for what we collect from the builders. Uh, and the we we made a estimate, um, estimate of of about twenty-nine thousand um, for the builder's part of it. And so that that twenty-nine thousand is part of the two eighty-four, six fifteen expense. We're 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 trying to budget it so um, budgeted revenues equal budgeted expense. Were we really in fact two hundred in the in the red? No, not not in the red, be be because the 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 revenue i- is understated by 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 that much also. So we we collected the the money to to pay the bills. So so what you're saying is on the revenue side, we're two hundred over? Yes, or under, no, over, you're right, over. What page of that is out, can I look at that?
Fourteen, fourteen?
Um, that's how it should work. Uh, okay.
Back, I'm sorry, back to page six.
What page?
Page, page fourteen.
Fourteen in the packet.
Um, you see solid disposal fees? Uh, I see franchise fee. Uh, down down about halfway of the the third section. Yep, we budgeted twenty-nine, we're at two fifty-six. And we're, okay, so.
Got it.
So it's it's as as long as it's under, as long as the budget's low in both places, we we should be okay. Yep, yep, perfect, thank you, thank you. I had a question about the street lighting, it looks like we, uh, similar situation, we budgeted for ninety-eight, we forecasted to spend one thirty-one.
Yep.
Is that, that's probably real considering that.
Yes, it's real and we're actually adding the uh, four traffic signals uh, to the budget as well.
Well, we're budgeting for almost to the penny what we spent, so shouldn't the the budget be more for twenty twenty-three, since we're adding traffic signals as well?
We'll go back and look at it.
Okay. And then, if you could clarify, the last line item on this is operating supplies?
Mm-hmm.
We budgeted for sixty-one hundred and and it's costing us thirty thousand, what is operating supplies? That is, um, that that's basically the um, the trash bins. For solid waste, that the the bins that we um. So that, I mean, that's something that we pass the cost on to to them, so we should have kind of the same situation on the revenue end, we should have. I'm not, I'm not sure that we collect the full cost, I I don't know, that.
We don't, we don't collect the full cost.
It'd be a question for Ken. Part of it we collect.
We collect probably three quarters of it back from the public when we actually have them.
So, I mean, I, it looks like.
And that's on the upgrades, the the smaller.
For twenty twenty-three, we're we're budgeting for, you know, fifteen dollars less than we're projected, which is fine. So I guess that line item should even out next year and not cost us.
Right. And when we go out, when we go out for the next um solid waste contract, my intent is to include the supplying of the bands, service of the bands, replacing with the bands in the contract with the hauler.
But that's not till what, twenty twenty-five or something?
It's in like one more eighteen months out.
Okay, um. Alright, so we talked about my public relations, uh, ba 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 ba. This, uh, I'm glad to see that this copy machine is out of there.
Yes.
And um, Ken, we spoke about this, but I think it's worth mentioning, the interest on the happy program.
Yes.
That we're not getting nearly enough, if we could move that that money, because it's almost, it's over three million dollars, if we could move it into an account.
We, I've talked, I sent an email to uh, Stephen and Stephen. Um, we'll be layering that into several different accounts, short-term, middle and long-term investments, where we can increase the uh, return on.
For that money, we can actually put that money to work for, now, now my question is, so, you know, because it was, the interest that we received on that money was was comical. Moving that money into accounts that we could make that money work for itself, I mean, three, three million dollars is no small figure. That additional revenue from the interest or whatever you want to call it, does it have to stay in special revenue?
Yes. Stays in the happy fund, yes.
More happy programs.
Stays in the happy fund.
Put that money to work.
Right.
Absolutely.
How many applications have we approved this month for the happy program?
For this month, we had um.
I didn't see this, I didn't see a specific number.
Think we had two closings this past month, we have probably nine, well, we have probably fifteen or twenty or better in the queue that have been approved, and we've received probably another six or eight inquiries and stuff. We're receiving several inquiries a week. Um, some of the inquiries never go beyond an inquiry and initial information and they don't fit.
Right.
Others, uh, and we fine tune that, we were used to taking a lot of information and then telling them they didn't fit, we've set it up now so that pretty much people give us the initial core information, we can say yes or no, or go on to the next step. So we're we're kind of making sure that that works.
And we do have the homes that fit the program?
We have some that are still in.
Uh, townhomes?
Now we do, absolutely.
The towns, the towns are within the program, we have some still that uh, even in uh, Skyco South, I believe, has a few that still fit the program.
What is the current uh, price?
Four sixty.
Four sixty.
Four sixty.
Okay, right.
Um, I did have a question on page twenty-six, under our expenditures for these just for our happy program.
Mm-hmm.
Budgeted two eighty-two, looks like we're only forecasted at thirty-nine, four twenty-five, what is that, that, those aren't actual happy awards. What is that? That. The 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 actual award is re- recorded as mortgage receivable on the balance sheet. So my my question is, under expenditures for assistance program. Uh-huh. We adopted a budget line item of two hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred, but we're only anticipated to spend thirty-nine thousand. What is that thirty-nine thousand dollars? Thirty-nine, the that that is, uh, as I'm I'm explaining, the the actual awards, the twenty thousand dollars per per household are recorded as a a mortgage receivable on the balance sheet, and then during the year, those are amortized. So what's what appears here ha- as expense is the change in in the the um mortgage receivable, the that's that's the amortization expense, because they're they're given ten years to 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 stay in the house, and if if they stay in in the house for for ten years, then the the um, award is forgiven.
So that you're talking about basically of the mortgages that we've already given out, that's accounting for part of the money that we're reducing off of that receivable.
Right.
Oh, if they were to sell.
As each, as as each year goes by, we can claim less and less of that twen- twenty thousand dollars be- because they're, they've stayed in the house a year longer and if they, if if they leave after five years, we we get to collect five the out or ten thousand back. If they leave in ten years, we we don't collect it any of it back, so each year, the amount that that is is receivable decreases, and and that expense that that you see, that thirty-nine thousand is what you will see on the audited financial statements, uh, and it's the it's the it's the amount by which our receivable has decreased from from year to year. Now, from what I'm understanding, you still have to put the full amount in the, as a budget line item, even though we can anticipate that it's you know, like, why do we have to budget for the two hundred and eighty thousand? For the, for that full amount, knowing very well that it's, you know, gonna be closer to. We're 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 doing that so so that we we can um, um, balance the 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 budget, we're we're anticipating a a certain number of of um, of uh, ev- every, every, every um uh, house that's built contributes fifteen hu- hundred dollars into this, into this uh, this fund. Uh, and so we're anticipating how how many many houses are built. Um, uh, and that's where the the three hundred thousand comes from in revenue. Um, the twenty-one thousand dollars in in admin, in uh, admin fee is what's actually paid from housing fund to general fund. And that two eighty-three, one is just what we have to put in to uh, balance the budget. Understood, thank you for uh, clarifying that. And those are all my questions. I appreciate uh, you guys running through it, hopefully that answered some of your questions too, but.
I just have some educational questions. Sure, yeah. Mine are too.
I'll go up to you.
Um, on page fourteen, twenty-two, so I'm not sure which.
Well, twenty-two, it's page fourteen of the packet, but it's twenty-two of the agenda.
Okay, and so.
So is that the general fund?
Yes, that is general fund of the department, so as, just a point of clarification, the general government under administrative services, and and now I understand that the actual is twenty twenty-one, we have the forecasted in twenty twenty-two. What makes up the general government, what exactly is that?
It's a combination, but it's also a placeholder for potentially this additional personnel.
Okay, thank you.
It's, you have to, I have to find, I have to find a line item someplace to plug it, that isn't assigned to a specific contract. So I use general government, and then if we need to add a personnel, we pull it out of there and put it into the contract of whoever's being on.
Perfect, and and again, to that, the contract up top where it says contracts finance, is that the contract for our accounting?
Yeah, that's the pro- that's the portion that is part of Infomark's contract, total contract.
Got you, okay.
What we, what we've done is split it into city manager, administration, finance, clerk, um, I think that's it, there's four, four major departments, sections that our contract is split into and spread through the budget.
Okay, under telephone and under facility services, and and I'm gonna choose telephone, I start a couple of them, so telephone, the first year was nineteen one oh four, second year fourteen. I was thinking we went down, but actually you asked that question, so it stayed the same, so I I I'm gonna skip that one. Insurance liability, what, it says liability auto property.
Mm-hmm.
Is that property for your office, what is that liability insurance for?
If I remember correctly, that is um the liability for the cities and the operation of.
Where are we looking right now, sorry?
This is.
Page twenty-two.
And again, I'm just trying to understand the line, so yes.
Twenty-two, got it.
Twenty-two. What's making up those?
That's that's the overall, that's the insurance cost for the liability insurance for the council, is their um errors and emissions policy, general liability, et cetera, for the city.
Okay, that's what I, and miscellaneous services? What makes up miscellaneous, did you ask that question?
No, it was, it was too small of a number.
I know, I'm just trying to understand what exactly is making up these accounts, so.
No, I agree.
Just so I understand.
I'd like to know too.
Yeah.
I'm trying to remember, Stephen, what's what's in the miscellaneous, there's so many pieces stuck in here.
I did see uh, council insurance in a different line item, I just want to point that out.
Yeah.
So this li- this insurance, I don't think is our council insurance, I think that.
It's general liability.
Your liability for other stuff, you know.
For legal, general.
General liability.
I I I recall seeing the council.
Yeah.
On our, on the council expenses. Yes, yes. So the the uh, miscellaneous expense, most of that is the um, um, annual property tax we have to pay on the copiers.
Oh, we pay property tax on.
Yeah, we have to pay that.
Okay, so yeah, it's a learning opportunity.
I remember that from another company, I have to pay taxes, I remember that, every year.
So the last two items, the principal capital lease payments, and again, just for educational purposes for me, what is the lease payment for?
Okay, um, there are, there are certain, there there are are certain lease payments that that you you can expense, and there there are other um, um, lease payments that are deemed to be um, in in effect a purchase. And so you you ca- capitalize the 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 payments and and you create a um um, a a liability account like in a debt account, and each 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 year, um, those payments, uh, e- even though they uh, appear on the in- income, no, no, income statement, the uh, interest part stays a- as an expense, the the principal part is applied to the to the debt. Um, this is a um, a lease on the um, software that the um, um, copier uses that we we had to um, uh, capitalize.
Okay, my last question is, can you explain the special? Okay. My last question is, can you explain the special assessments from the tax collector?
Uh, which page are you on?
I am now, sorry, on page fourteen?
Special, yeah, special assessments tax collector is the solid waste assessments that we put on a year and a half ago.
Yep.
So that instead of trying to, um, send a bill out and get people to pay their solid waste, we put it on the tax bill. So that everybody pays on their taxes upfront, we get the cash flow in, then we pay out the contractor as they do it.
Perfect, thank you.
Part of that is a timing thing because we do, um, so that there isn't the requirement for us to send out an interim bill. We, when we do the closings, the COs with the builders, we not only cover this year, but next year's so that the resident doesn't actually have to come out of pocket. It's already in their closing documents that they've been paid for until they actually hit the tax rolls. So that then the next tax cycle, the assessment kicks in, so they don't, because we had some that, well, they, I just paid for half a year, but yeah, but you gotta pay for next year. Stops that confusion.
Yes. Thank you.
You got caught.
Yeah, I got caught. Everybody's complaining, why do we have two bills now?
Kind of, we're, we're expecting our commercial to be up and running by the end of the year?
Um, it won't hit. I don't think part of Publix will be, but I don't think Publix will make it by January one. I doubt it. I doubt if Publix will make it. We won't really see, everything that's gonna be on next year's has to be CO'd by January, or before January first.
For us to count it?
Yes, for it to count on our tax rolls.
Okay.
Um, so that's why timing, even with builders and stuff, they time things to what's gonna hit when for taxes and stuff. Um, and that's why we also have a lag, which we're trying to make sure that we cover. But I don't, the, the one that will hit this year is we'll get another bump with the seven eleven one point O. We're gonna pick up some more bump with, well, two point O we got already. We got hit, I think two point O hit this year, one point O hit. And then I think portions of the improvements to Win Dixie Plaza and stuff will also kick in. So those are all things that'll be done by January first. Now, no, they don't really count.
Press hold it, it doesn't count.
Yeah.
No taxes.
Or the tax collector.
What tax collector?
Twenty twenty-four is gonna be a really exciting one.
Yes.
Twenty twenty-four is gonna be great.
That's, and that's why I say, you know, getting the commercial is, in the slide, is the commercial is really key to viability of any community. If you don't have enough commercial, you're just not gonna survive.
Do you already have like an anticipation of how much we should get from this commercial so far?
No, not, not till the tax collector and the property appraiser put the numbers together.
And it's CEO.
That CEO will know.
CEO will know.
Um, page seventeen, uh, city council department.
Mm-hmm.
Wanted to inquire about maybe raising the dues licenses subscriptions, one hundred dollars to fifteen hundred, because we're, it looks like we're already over budget.
The fourteen twenty-one.
Dollars.
Agreed.
So make it fifteen. I like to see, they never go above the budget number, like, I think the state within it, we're projecting fourteen twenty-one, I'm thinking either fifteen or maybe sixteen.
We'll go to sixteen and see what it, what the impact is.
And then I, I might have missed it, but I've been looking, um, the line item for the inspector general fee. I'm not seeing that in expenses. Where does that fall?
We.
And how much is that?
That should be on page twenty-five. Uh, professional service, um, compliance.
So we're paying them a hundred thousand? Okay.
Wow.
I know it's total service, we're paying five hundred. Our budget was a hundred sixty-five million.
That's, that's for the ethics.
That's for them to inspect our budget.
It's for all service, respect for general.
Okay, so we're paying them a hundred. Okay.
Thank you.
I saw one other thing. I just need, I'm learning here today, so.
We all learn.
Federal grants on page fourteen. You said we have not really applied, I think Ken made reference to us not actually.
We haven't applied for.
Applied for any grants, but it looks like we have revenue in twenty twenty-one, so what was?
That's the ARP, that's the ARP of funds, correct, Stephen?
Yes, it is.
That's the American Recovery Act funds that was sent, the city, um, we did not apply when the government was giving out everybody money. Technically, they told us we were gonna get six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of American Recovery Act funds. They sent a check for three hundred and thirty-five or three hundred and forty thousand dollars. But it has a lot of contingencies on how you spend it and what you can spend it on. And so it's just sitting there in a bank account for now, uh, until, shall we say, the smoke settles a little bit because they keep changing the rules of what you can spend it for and how you can spend it. And I'm looking for when they really relax it down to very simple rules before I figure out what to spend it for. But, uh, my thought process is whatever we utilize those funds for would be something that I would recommend is a more permanent structured, long-term benefit to the community versus on some short-term thing.
I couldn't agree more.
What other grants have we participated in?
We haven't participated in any.
And one of the things I read, that could be something we can do for parks eventually.
We can do it for a number of things, um, at one of the, um, conventions I was at, there's a group that, um, that I don't have all the information, but the concept is they will, um, they have investors and resources that they will build facilities for municipalities. And then basically, the municipality pays a annual fee, they will also maintain them. You can buy it out at any point in time, but I don't have all the details to it. But it is an, is, is one of the things that I'm looking at. How, as we go forward, can we construct a park scenario down, down there as well? Because we do need to figure out different ways of funding since ISTF with, which was a good deal, is gone, we have to come up with other options. This may be one of the options we explore.
Does Infomark have a grant writer?
That's what I was just about to ask. Cities use grant writers.
Yes, they do. Um, we do not, Infomark does not have a grant writer. Uh, that would be me, otherwise.
Because they're tricky.
Um, what I have.
Gold.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are.
What I.
As good as men knows how to do them.
Yeah.
In, in one of the, um, other clients that we work with, they have a group that specializes in grants. And for a very reasonable, which is amazing, very reasonable fee, uh, they will scout out, find, write the grants and help administer. They're, they're on. It's, it's like for applying for the grant, it's, it's like four, five thousand dollars, very, very inexpensive. And for that particular entity, they've already brought back one grant, which is, uh, for blower replacement of a, a water plant. A grant that's, uh, five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. They brought back another one for increasing their fluoride for like two hundred thousand dollars. So there are out there.
Oh, there's money out there.
The tricky part about grants, and I know Greg will understand this, is you gotta know where you think the money is, it isn't. It's buried in some other department of a department that you don't even think would be close to, quote, bridges or roads. It's somewhere. It's in either the federal or the state budget somewhere. You just have to have the people that know where to go turn over the rocks and find it for you.
How come we're not using them?
Hmm?
How come we're not using?
Haven't had the need for them yet, but it will be part of, as we look for the parks and other stuff, I will be bringing them into the.
So maybe, maybe next year it's a line item. We're just saying not currently.
Correct.
Even infrastructure.
Oh, infrastructure, basically, since the city doesn't construct the infrastructure, those grants would be over in the Sid side of the equation. But yes, that same firm will be working on the Sid side, looking for infrastructure grants as well.
Do we have unincorporated land? Because that was one of the other.
No.
Sometimes reading way too much this past time. No.
No.
Or, um, used collations where schools can provide us with an area where we can do a park? Because I knew you had said parks were maybe in this budget at some point, but.
No.
Trying to read.
I don't think we have that. What we do have is Seminole Improvement District, uh, was deeded the seventy-five acres, which is from the, uh, fields of the high school, south to Sycamore. Sycamore, right? Yeah. That's south to Sycamore, it's about seventy-five acres in there, uh, for park. In the inner local agreement, there's an, uh, some clauses in there about parks and recreation. And that's part of the joint meetings between Seminole Improvement District and this board is to figure out where you want to go and what you want to do. Since Sid owns the land and Sid can operate parks, Sid can own parks, et cetera, et cetera. Part of the concept of the initial structure was Sid would own and operate it, et cetera. But the city would work with the district on programming and what's there and what they want to put, and then how much money they would contribute to the park, et cetera. Designing it. That's one of the things that we do need to, um, come forward. I was gonna bring it up at the next meeting, but might as well here at the budget. Is that, um, it's my recommendation, and we've had an offer from, uh, the developer to work with the district to provide a, um, planner, designer for the park that would, um, do some charrettes with the public, with the council, with the Sid board to come up with some conceptual plans of what can be done down there on that seventy-five acres. And we would also look at it as far as in phases. You know, what can we do, you know, may not have enough to fill all of it at once, but we can build part A, part B, part C, and how we could phase it in. Um, there is some work that's gonna be going on shortly down there, um, in that area. Seminole Improvement District will be, uh, constructing another two million gallon reuse water tank or the reuse system in the city as part of its infrastructure. They just floated a bond for that. Uh, so that'll be going on, and as part of that, they're anticipating digging a, um, I say moat, but basically a lake, um, along the backside of the perimeter landscaping on Seminole Prep, all the way down to Sycamore, which would then isolate the park except for the two roads. So again, you don't have to have fencing, you can isolate the park, you shut the park down at night. It is again, a barrier for people. So that's part of the, part of the concept of how to.
And it fits in with storm drainage.
Fits in with storm drainage, et cetera, because that storm drainage whole, whole situation, the storm drainage off that site would go through there, it'd go down. So we're trying to utilize natural features and man-made features to make it as secure as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter, for being so gracious to, to front those costs.
Yeah.
Yes.
For the design aspect that we just talked about, so that's, that's huge.
One of the things, as a manager being here since twenty thirteen, one of the things I've appreciated is the, um, the vision and the working relationship that the prior council, this council, and the developed, major developer have had. That it's really about creating a vision and a place for people and for the people versus, you know, fight teams are fighting and stuff. It's like, what do we do, what do we need to do and how do we need to do it? And also thinking outside of the box and looking at different ways to accomplish the task. I've been, I've been blessed to be here for these, these seven, eight years.
Thank you.
We have any budget, more budget questions?
I want to ask a little bit, um, improve in page twenty-two. It says, prove serve information technology. I just want to know what kind of technology we're talking about here, like.
Mostly your GIS system. A geographical information system, everything that is, every plaque, every house. Every addressing, nine-one-one, all the mapping, every time, every time you approve a plat, all that information goes into the GIS system. Which is then basis for fire response, police response, everybody, it's into their system as well as the tax collector's office and the property appraiser's office. We, for years, they did it by hand. Uh, we're majorly forward-thinking on all this. We're putting it all in a GIS database. And we're actually giving it to the county in shape files, so the county doesn't have to convert it. So we're pushing the envelope. What would normally take them six months to a year to get out the door, we're making it so that they can get it out the door in a month or two months.
Does that also include Avatara and, and the other IT?
No, Avatara is.
Yes, yes, it does.
Yeah.
Does.
Does.
Yeah.
That, that includes, uh, the.
Website.
The.
No, website, website is over in Zoe's.
The, the cloud service with, which is at Avatara, and that one, which is like our IT department. So that's about, combined, that's about seven thousand a month. Six or seven, those two.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, councilwoman? Other questions?
No more questions.
Councilman Martinez?
What keeps coming to mind is Fourth of July. It's my mind.
In terms of.
Making sure we can cover it.
Exactly.
It's, it's cemented. It, we're covering. It's happening.
So what, all the points that JP said today, I think we should review them.
What we'll do is we'll go back and make the changes and resend it out to y'all with the changes.
I mean, let's get consensus now with, with the, the few things that I mentioned, Too Rich, Too Lean. Does anybody disagree?
No.
With any of those?
We agree. I agree.
So one thing I, one point, and you did bring up was the special events, um, it was, you were talking about maybe reducing that amount. Not for, not for the events, but for the, um, uh, public relation. You said that the amount was.
I just think in general.
Fifty-five from here, ten from there, and the budget will work itself out.
Yeah, I mean, and I, and I could just send you my notes if you could read my handwriting.
Yeah.
But there are certain items, or I could type it up even better. That's what I'll do. There's just a couple of things I thought maybe needed to be revisited as far as, uh.
I was good with the, I was fine with those points.
Well, and there may be things that, because it's a snapshot in June, that as we look at July's, there may be some numbers and change, but we'll go back, we'll look at your notes and do your conversation to look at it and work on it.
Yeah, so we've been at it then.
I think it's very, very important to mention this. I would be remiss if I didn't. We budgeted to have to, to possibly take a check from Mr. Carter for almost a million dollars, nine hundred and change.
I'm sure.
This year.
This year wasn't five hundred?
No, let, next, the proposed budget is five something.
This year, nine hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars, which we're not gonna be anywhere near that because we're forecasting as a dash. Chances are it's gonna be a, a much, 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 much smaller number, which goes to, to tell you two things. I mean, we need to, uh, commend Mr. Carter on his progress in, in developing homes. Because we have limited commercial, that's what's been reducing that number, is the amount of homes that are coming in. In addition to our ability to run a government very, very clean.
Yeah.
So we're actually, if that number really ends up being zero, we're, we're gonna have about a million dollars more than.
Hmm, no, we still haven't funded, we haven't, we haven't funded the first quarter operating. So it still could be, you know.
Five seven.
It could still be having to go out and ask Mento for a funding agreement of anywhere from two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be sure that we're funded for first quarter.
Into twenty twenty-three budget.
Well.
The budget we're working on right now.
Well, until the funding agreement runs out, I don't really have to fund my first quarter operating. So that's where it's been kind of a give and take with.
So what, what I'm trying to say is, trick me if I'm wrong, but you've got a line item budget in your budget, but you were ready to write a check for nine thirty if necessary, and you probably won't have to write that check.
Hopefully not.
So that's, I mean, it's, that's, we all need to pat ourselves on the back for being able to run lean government, be fiscally responsible.
Exactly.
And also the growth. And also the growth, I mean, the fastest, Bowen City and, and Florida, more building permits than any other municipality in Palm Beach County, that all is really what works into that number.
Exactly.
It's impressive, guys, it's it's great. And I think probably, probably doing very well. That's all I've got.
My last comment is, we were either extremely good or extremely lucky when we were forecasting back in twenty sixteen on this, because we're pretty much right on target, and it's, it's insane to what's been going on.
With a pandemic.
Yeah.
With the pandemic, with everything, it's just, I look at the numbers, I look at the stuff, and John and I have talked multiple times on it, it's like.
That's what that experience brings.
You know, thought it would go, should have gone, it actually happened. We're good.
I mean, is it, is it safe to say discounting reserves? Is it safe to say that, that the city stood on its own two feet?
Word. We got, took, had to get very little last year, and this year I don't expect, except for the fund balance, or the first quarter operating to really have to do that. Yeah, so we're, we're in, we're remarkably good because we've budgeted conservatively on revenue and expenses, and it's balanced out so that we're covering what we need to cover. And again, you know, as I mentioned earlier, this is the, what it really cost us to have the structure set up. It's not the building department or the other stuff that's out here, it's just to operate, this is what it cost us to run a basic function, because all the other infrastructures over on Sid side and building department is, fluctuates with revenue.
To your knowledge, are there any other municipalities in the county that operate the way we do?
No, there's none in the state. Other, well, yeah, none in the state, actually, we're the only one in the state.
For the world here.
Weston used to operate very similar. But they changed their model, but they're still a contract city, but they do not have a do they have it? Yeah, they disbanded their, they sucked their district into them. Wellington used to be two, but they have a dependent district, which is where at the twenty five to thirty year mark, where we will go to become a Seminole Improvement District will be a dependent district versus an independent district. But you always want to keep, you never want to get rid of them, keep ingraining it to everybody, you never want to get rid of a special district. They are like gold. You, once you get rid of it, you can probably never reconstitute it. Yeah. Good, good.
Yeah, let's not do that.
Yeah.
I was going to say contingency versus the reserve, what are some, and I know we're just about through, but as you talked about the reserves not being used, what do we use contingency for?
Contingency is for the unexpected, oops, that we don't know come out, in other words. We haven't had to use a lot of contingency, because most of the things we anticipated happened, we budgeted for. But contingency is also for, you never know what the state legislature is going to do in any given session where they say, oh gee, now you've got to do something. House Bill fifty three last year required every municipality special district to do an analysis on their stormwater, and their wastewater for the next twenty year projections, and what they're doing as far as how to protect it, et cetera, and grow it. So every district, all of a sudden, and every municipality that has water, wastewater and stormwater services had to come up with that, Seminole Improvement District had to come up with that, we had to spend, I'm not sure what the dollar amount was, but we had to have the engineers run through a full analysis for the next twenty years for wastewater and stormwater.
One more question. If I missed it, I apologize. Gas franchise, gas tax, I thought we worked that out to where it would be in next year's budget.
I don't have the numbers yet, so I cannot budget for it.
But it'll be something.
It'll be something, yes.
So that's another line item coming in.
It's an unanticipated revenue, which will actually help again, it's another, another source.
And then, so next Tuesday is our regular city council meeting, will we have these new members that night or no?
I think Stephen can probably put together a handout, we won't put it on the agenda, but we'll get it out to you by next meeting.
I think we did it already, but, but city council comments, going by my, my script here, that's next, any council member has anything else to say?
Thanks, yeah.
Trying to get you guys home.
Keep trying.
City attorney comments?
Thanks for making me, thank you.
Mr. Manager?
One last comment, thank you Danielle for bailing DJ and Jacob out and coming up here, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Let's open up for public comment. Section of the agenda allows for comment from the public to speak, each speaker will be given a total of three minutes to comment. A public comment card should be completed and returned to the city clerk. When you recall to speak, please go to the podium, unmute your device, and prior to addressing the council, state your name and address for the record. Do we have any public comments?
Mayor, I received no public comment cards prior to the meeting, however, I will give the virtual audience a moment to raise their virtual hand or unmute their device, stating their name and address, if you are a caller that has been muted, you may press star six to speak, please state your name and address. If you wish to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand or unmute your device by pressing star six and state your name and address, you have three minutes. Mayor, we have no comments.
No public comments. With that being said, I thank everyone, and I will adjourn at seven thirty six PM. Thank you, everybody. We have a very productive workshop.
It was very good, thank you.